Thank you for your patience as we return from our closed session. This is the end of our meeting. This part of our special called meeting for tonight, and again, we hope you all have a safe and happy, restful, fun summer. Is there a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Second?
There are no question or discussion led to be known by I for approval. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Now I will send it over to our Chair of Buildings and Grounds.
Thank you Chair Woodbury. So let me first extend apologies on behalf of the Board for keeping you in here, especially since it seems like it's extremely cold in here, or at least it is upstairs up here. So we do thank you for your patience, that we were quite behind the 6:30 time, but we will, we will get right to it. So Board, let me, first, this is a group discussion for all of us, but it is a Special Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting, and so we do want to make sure that we have a quorum, or at least just identify those who would be taking any potential action tonight. And so of course, I chair, Dana Cottle-Jones, I chair the committee. Deanna Kaplan is a member of the Buildings and Grounds Committee, as well as Alex Bohannon and Marilyn Parker. And also Lyda Coward-Hayson, Lyda is not with us this evening. So we, we do have quorum to, to move on. First up tonight, we have, well, we have several things on our agenda for discussion, and I think some of those are also, might blur a little bit, and so we're going to kind of talk about this, and then the pleasure of the Board and the Committee as to kind of how we want to, to end up and have some other discussion. So first, we have the Reynolds Stadium History. I think Darrell will, will lead us through that document. Then we will talk about Parkland and some on-site needed improvements there on the campus. Then some conversation around Deaton Thompson and the stadium renovations, and then a Forest for Site update. So Darrell, if you will kind of start us off.
Yes ma'am, thank you Madam Chair and Superintendent Madison Board. We can enact the buddy role if you want to, and get out here by eight o'clock, if we want to move through this thing pretty quick. But no, we appreciate everybody's patience through this. Yeah, I thought, I thought before we got too deep into a conversation, I kind of need to understand a little bit of the history here of, of this discussion. And so as you can see, the document in front of you, and I think you had that in Assembly earlier for you to be able to see, really kind of starts back as part of the donation of the 47 acre track in 1919. You can see, and we talked about this in an earlier meeting, of football was played in Haynes Park, actually the area where the baseball field currently exists in, in 1923. And then, as you can see, back in the late 30s, Parkland and Reynolds shared Bowman Gray Stadium at the time, and, and working again with the city on that relationship. And then in, in the mid 1980s, the conversation started about building a new stadium, sorry about that, and similar to the conversations that, that, that we're having today. So you can see in, in 1984, that was the memorandum of understanding, the shared athletic stadiums, the community adopted a plan to share football stadiums at Bowman Gray 85. And then in 1985, January 1985, Booster Club President spoke concerning the need for a stadium on the campus at Reynolds. So there were, there were several facility studies, as you see through the 80s, and I, I won't, I won't go into a lot of detail there, you can see a lot of that information. There was actually some community neighborhood meetings in, in around May in 1985. And then as we get into the later part of 1985, there was a meeting, citizens, there were some citizens that spoke out about the Reynolds Stadium. And then in November, a member of the Reynolds asked that the stadiums be built for Reynolds and Parkland in 86, 87. And that kind of started what is currently known as the Deaton Thompson Stadium today. And you may remember, some folks in the community may remember the old Skyland School, and when that, some of that property was sold, some of those funds, as well as some capital funds, were, were utilized to build the Deaton Thompson Stadium, kind of as we know it today. So I'm gonna, you know, that, that kind of carried on again through 85, 86, there were some, again, some Reynolds Athletic Facility Committee and some recommendations made. Also, what probably came out of this was where the Bolton Complex, where we currently play soccer, and lacrosse for, for Reynolds and Parkland had, had participated. Some of that came out of those late 80 meetings. And so, and then in 1987, you will see that the Board of Education approved the architect and engineers for the dual stadium. And then there was some exchange of property, where the city went to sale them for that particular location. In 1992, you can see that Haynes Park, there were some Haynes Park improvements, the Board provided $11,865 for improvement in the areas adjacent to Reynolds and the Wiley's that abut Haynes Park. And so that was kind of first impact, really, investment really into the Haynes Park area. Kind of jump forward to the 90s into 2012, and you will see that, once again, we started beginning to have conversations and express discussions around having a stadium on campus for Reynolds High School. And we had a series of meetings, Buildings and Grounds, and a series of meetings with the public, as well as the Home Field Advantage Group, that was the advocate for the, the stadium, it currently is still the advocate for the stadium. So we had a lot of conversation in our community, obviously, as we all know, some for, some against. I think, at that point in time, I think it's important to know that we were, if you remember any time, anything about that period of time in life, there was an economic downturn and really struggling in our community financially. Our Board chose, we were, we were scheduled to have a bond referendum in 2012, our Board chose not to because of the economic downturn. And so we were coming out of the 2006 bond, just finishing up, there really wasn't any cash flow. And that's where this conversation that led to the public-private partnership kind of began. And so as you see, going through 2012 up around 2014, the RJ Boosters and Home Field Advantage folks worked, worked hard to raise some dollars, and they did raise some money to, to invest into the field along Reynolda Road, which is now a practice facility, and as part of their contribution. I, I do need to note, and I think just to be honest and transparent here, when that process started in 2012, you may recall that the requirement, the request at the time from the Board was that they fundraise for Bryson Gym, the Wiley Gym, and the stadium. And so that, that was a heavy load to carry, and, and so a lot of that, too, was because there really wasn't any capital funds and additional dollars within the district at that time. So, and, and so when that new Board came on, and Alicia, Ms. Jones, there was some discussion around bringing the capital work in the gym and the Wiley project to the bond, and bringing the Bryson Gym back to the capital side of things, to kind of bring some relief to that request, so that there, there was a little more fairness in that, quite honestly. That really needed to be our responsibility. So that, that came back to staff, and, and so we are now, as you know, in, in the midst of the 2016 bond, and the Wiley project is underway, and we'll be opening up some time here in the really near future. And so we still have some work to do at Reynolds, our Reynolds Gym, Bryson Gym, quite frankly, we'll probably end up being in a bond project, it's pretty significant, some work that we need to do there. So as you see through 2014, there was some money raised. In 2019, we, we reviewed and, and the Haynes Park User Agreement was, was up and ready for renewal. And so at that point, there was some conversation around stadium again, in favor, trying to get the stadium built on campus. And as you see, there was a lot of ongoing conversation, and a lot of this has kind of led us to where we are. I do think it's important to note in May, that, that footnote, May 28th, that, that Home Field Advantage has raised approximately $430,000 invested in the practice field, as well as the design and pre-construction drawings for a potential stadium in the future. So we're kind of, that's kind of where we are at this point, the history of, of the stadium and the conversations around the stadium. And so I thought it was important that you understood that. Also, I think that you may have gotten the, the document, maybe even today, that was a PowerPoint presentation from 2012, that actually showed the number of sites that were analyzed in the original process. And so there, there was a lot of locations across, and within the geographic area of the city, around the school that we analyzed. Some were not economically feasible, some just didn't, you know, just, just didn't work right either. And so we, we, we as a staff have, have kind of, right now, are focusing on what is the current location recommendation of, of location in front of Wiley, between the new Wiley Gym and the Bryson Gym. So I know it's been a lot of conversation about the size of it, because it, it will not be the same size as, as the other four A-size schools. But I do think that it, it has some opportunity to, to grow as, as, as we go on in history of time, if that were to happen, and so.
Jeff, can I just, can I ask a question?
Yes ma'am.
I think in the, the timeline, and it may be up there, but I think it's important to know that, that the Board of Education has, has had MOUs with Home Field Advantage in, in July of 2018, and I think the Board all received it, that was, that's the latest MOU, where Bryson Gym was taken out, Wiley was taken out, and, you know, so, so speaking to the point, that I would think that prior Boards, I know there's been some conversation about is that the right location, but I think our, myself in 2018, and predecessors had pretty much settled on that location, right? I mean, we, we, we had them go out and do drawings and, and permits and meet with, you know, around that. And so, you know, I will just, I would just note, and we can get into discussion about that later, but just, that's, to me, that's a big pause if we're having to have any kind of discussion about a different location, because we have really given the green light and the go. When I say we, Boards of Education are passed, and, and some of us that are still on there, to kind of move forward with that. So I think if we can just put a note there, asterisk beside that, if we need to go back and talk about it, but that MOU is there.
Yep. So that's really all I have on, on the history of, of the stadium and the discussions around that, but can entertain any questions if you had any, or we can move on to the next item, whatever you prefer.
And, and I would just like to get some feedback from, from the Committee and, and Board as we move forward, that if we, if we, I think a lot of this kind of is intertwined, and so if we want to ask particular questions right now, we can definitely do that. Or would we like to go through Reynolds History, Parkland, and Deaton Thompson, hear all that, and then kind of bring people back up or ask questions?
I would like to hear all of that, and that way we could have a really good, you know, a good, rich background of questions, you know, if we have some questions to ask, because some of them might already get answered, if we start going through it.
Other, Ms. Parker, Mr. Bohannon, what do you think?
That's fine.
Okay. So if we can jot, jot those, jot those things down, and then we'll come back, and Board Member Bramer, did you have a question?
I'll wait.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay. So in, in our discussions, there's, there, we've had some discussions with, with you about the potential of a stadium, of contributing to Stadium at Reynolds, and some additions of some services to Parkland High School as part of that same opportunity. What is before you is kind of, kind of the wish list of discussions I've had with some of the Parkland administration and athletic staff, and, but, but my main focus, to be honest with you, was really around site improvements on campus at Parkland as related to. They have a current field there that they use as a practice field. It's kind of a regulation sized field, actually, has a track around it, put a track around it a few years back. But on the north side and west side, on the north side of the property, kind of on the Volvo side, there's about a hundred foot drop-off over there, right? So part of the improvements that, that I had considered when, in, in this proposal, is to do a little surface work on their field, it's already irrigated, to put up some fencing and some netting, so that balls did not fly over the hill or out on Peters Creek Parkway, that they could, they could play soccer and lacrosse and some of those type sports there. We'd have to add some bleachers, and then consider a possible restroom facility there, which is, they struggle with when they have track meets there, because people have to go into the building to utilize the restrooms, and then have to manage that. So that's kind of the wish list, you see the baseball, that's, that's just, that's just kind of on my list of things to, to work on with them. But as far as the work in conjunction with the Reynolds Stadium, the, the field surface upgrade, the fencing and netting, the bleachers, and a potential restroom facility is what I've, I do not, have not applied money, have not engineered this, not applied money to this yet, but we have identified it as needs there.
How is the surface of the track at Parkland?
Their track?
How's the surface?
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape. We, we, we built that track probably five or six years ago, we've done a little resurface work on it the last couple of years. It's not an eight lane track like we have at, at Atkins or Reagan, and they're, but none of our other schools have the eight lane tracks either, so, but it's, it's a good surface for them to run on.
I mean, I had checked it out, last, two years ago, been a couple of years, but there were potholes actually in the track. Have those all been filled and regraded?
Yeah, we've redone those.
Darrell, what about that, there's a field, I, if you're like, standing in front of the school, over there by the fence, like adjacent to Peters Creek Parkway, it's like a, it's, it's like empty, it's just like grass, it's like the bus lot, and then there's a field right there. Is that used for anything right now?
It is not. It's funny you said that, I don't mean to get too sidetracked, but Ms. Parker, remember, we actually, Ms. Mott singer, remember, we actually looked at that as the location for Carter High School, back in the day, before it got to the location it currently is. But no, there is nothing, it's, it's just grassed area.
Yeah, we used to, the band used to practice there, I just, I wondered if people are still using it for something.
They still do.
Can I ask a question?
So you mentioned this wish list for Parkland, and then we're talking about a stadium for Reynolds, so what, where, what other deficiencies does Reynolds have that would be on their wish list, as far as athletic facilities?
I have not met with them, I think what, the intent for this was to see, you know, if we were to build a stadium at Reynolds, what we could do to offer Parkland something in, in this. The Deaton Thompson Stadium is going to have to be in the 24 bond. You, I think you may have a copy of the report, we did a engineering reporting for the general public in 2015, and that engineering report, if you look at it, has some pretty substantial issues within Deaton Thompson Stadium. We, we spent some money there to repair a lot of those, but the engineering report basically says that you had 10 years' life on the stadium. And so I would do the math, that's 2025, so we would have to come out of that bond referendum with our feet on fire, because the last thing we'd want, something to happen like happened this weekend in Florida, right? I mean, you just, you worry about those kind of things.
So Darrell, do you, do you have anything else pertaining to Deaton Thompson that you specifically want to say?
You know, the Deaton Thompson project, as, when it comes out of the bond, will be the exact project to what Glenn and Mount Taber received in this bond referendum. We'll demo the concrete bleachers, put in aluminum bleachers, new press box, some storage buildings for their mowers, and concession and restrooms will be added. So the whole concrete slab issue will, will all go away. And then we probably will reduce the size of the stadium a little bit on the home side, on the visitor side. That's, that stadium seats capacity of about, right at 6,000 people. And so it was built that way because there was two schools going to utilize this, this site, and so we'll probably lower that to probably 53, 5400, which is kind of common for what the other schools of that size are.
How big is Parkland High School? Is it 3A?
It is, it is 3A now, it was 4A at the time when it was built. In fact, at that point in time, all of our high schools in the county were 4A at one time, and so.
So it could be 4A? It could go up to 4A if it was that capacity?
You're right, yeah.
And how many teams?
Just like Mount Taber this year went up to the 4A from 3A. They got moved up this year.
How many teams does, does Parkland offer the full menu of athletic teams that the 4As, that a lot of the 4As do?
They have, I'm not sure if they have field hockey, but I know they do have lacrosse. And outside of that, that's the only.
They have boys and girls lacrosse, four teams?
Yes.
Okay.
Two teams, I believe. I think there's just a varsity team, I believe. And Madam Chair, I don't really have anything else other to share about that unless you, again, there's more specific questions.
Elizabeth, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question about Haynes Park. Is this an appropriate time to ask it?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. Is there flooding that occurs in Haynes Park?
Flooding?
Is flooding ever an issue in Haynes Park?
I, I know that, and, I mean, I know they've had some issues on the tennis courts flooding from time to time. I think, practice wise, you know, obviously it's delayed some practices, but I don't know how serious of a problem it is.
Do you know anything about how they have, or, so the biggest risk in climate change in Forsen, in North Carolina, right? There's all kinds of mapping as to what's going to be most affected. And floods are the number one risk where we are. And anybody, I, I know driving on what I still call Old Forty, right? That ages me, but there are places where after it's been raining about 10 minutes in these pounding rains, you actually start running into standing water. And so my concern is, what kind of protection is there in basically a bowl, right? Because Haynes Park is a bowl, if, if you look at what it's like geographically. And I'm wondering, has there been any research done into what's expected to happen there?
I, I know that the city, again, Jeff, if you don't mind if I speak on behalf, but I think, you know, the city did do a flood study as part of their evaluation during their bond, I think, for the park projects, that was pretty extensive. And so, and just so you know, to, to put this out there, is that if the stadium were to be built, in the location we're talking about, our stormwater underground retention will be under the playing surface of the field, to capture all of our rainwater off of Northwest Boulevard.
And, and the, do we have stormwater retention ponds under playing fields currently?
We have it, we have it under the parking lot at the Crewe Center.
Okay.
And we have it at, Spies has one as well. And so you're probably going to see more of that, the more we develop within the city, you'll see more underground retention.
Okay. And so in Spies, that's under a playground as well, is that correct?
Under, under what, I'm sorry?
Where is the underground retention pond at Spies? Is it under?
Under a parking lot.
Under a parking lot, so, so far?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, all right. And is it common to put underground retention ponds under playing fields?
It, it is in today's, today's world, yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am, pretty common.
All right, thank you.
So first, I'd like to say I am in support of a Reynolds Stadium. If I haven't been clear about that, I am. I'm just very concerned about the location and funding. So I'd like to talk about the MOU. The MOU states that we will not fund this. This is a partnership, and I, I mean, I can go with the first thing, the HFA will submit its drawings to the City of Winston-Salem, the North Carolina Department of Insurance, North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality, and other required agency for review and comments upon advance notice to the Winston-Salem-Side County staff. Has that been done?
Yes.
And has number two been done? I know, I think number two has been done, and we're stuck on number three.
Yes ma'am.
And since the 1990s, Reynolds has been trying to fundraise for the stadium, 1980s, correct?
No, I think, I think the fundraising really just kind of started in the 2012 era. I think there was some conversation about it in the mid 80s.
Right, there was some.
Not necessarily, it actually got off the ground.
So it didn't get off the ground till 2012, but in 2012, they started to fundraise, and in 2018, they said they would be able to fundraise 5 million, and we're sending spending 430,000. Have they provided proof that they have the funding necessary to build this field?
So part of the agreement that we have in place today notes that currently, that the money has to be in an account, a certain account for us, in order for this to move forward, and that there's maybe some further discussion about that, but currently, we, it has to be shown to us that it's in the account before.
And has it been shown, that we've seen?
I have not asked for it, quite honestly.
Also, I, I noticed that this expires on July 31st every year annually, and if you want to cancel it, it's not concrete. This is not a concrete piece of, you know, something that is blocked and is permanent. It is a legal document. It is a legal document that can be changed 30 days in advance by either party. So have, is anybody ever considered possibly that this might need to be amended so we can look at locations and possibly look at funding?
No, ma'am, not that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to note that there's nowhere in the agreement that it, in the MOU, that says that the school system cannot participate in the funding.
Okay, so we, to kind of stay on, because obviously there's more discussion that we're going to have, but we also have one more discussion item, and so, because I think all of the discussion around the stadium, Parkland, Deaton Thompson, are going to, it's going to take a while. And so we want to make sure that we hear from, from, from all board members, especially our committee members. And so if Nicolette Grant would, can do our Forest Forsyth update, I think then we can go back and get into that.
Can I ask that Darryl not leave, because I'll have more questions for him?
He will not leave, and we have our CFO here as well and other staff.
Good evening, board members. I'm Ms. McManus, and Darryl is actually my co-lead on the Forest. I always get mixed up Forest, Forsyth, Forsyth Forest. I always switch them. So Darryl and I have talked, and a couple of things that we're looking at right now for this initiative is to work with Urban Strategies. We had a meeting last week to talk with them specifically around the Cleveland Avenue Home Rebuild. And we had members from the Housing Authority, and we talked about the opportunity to partner with Forest Forsyth around the neighborhood and community rebuild of that area, and utilizing that as part of helping students to help design possibly the area there, and the community be involved, and gardens. And so it was a preliminary talk, but there seemed to be a lot of interest in utilizing that grant and the work around the urban strategies and the Choice Neighborhood Initiative. And that would give us a great opportunity to start this initiative in a smaller area that would focus on a particular rebuild and have some community partnership and ownership of that. So that's one avenue that we're looking at. And then we have a meeting scheduled coming up soon, on 14th of July, where we're going to talk about that, and then also talk about some smaller pilots. What can we do? What's accomplishable? What's manageable? Because we're also worried about scale and the project management of a project that big. So we've had some preliminary conversations. We all agree in the value of it. We're just worried about the management of it and how do we make sure that we bring it to scale and include students? So some early conversations. What did I leave out, Darryl?
I think, I think one of the things I got out of the conversation was that we're really interested in doing learning landscapes. And so what does that really mean? Is that some outdoor learning spaces that we can incorporate? One of the things when they surveyed teachers, one of the concern was the travel time from the classroom to outside and back, and did they get the full effect, you know, of this. And so part of that is, let's build some outdoor class. And we heard a little bit of that tonight, and the SFR funds is going to kind of tie in well with some of that, that we create these outdoor learning spaces and trails and things of that nature for students. So it is impactful as soon as they get out there, and we're not trying to manage 24, 25 kids and get them back and forth. And so the other thing that we talked a little bit about was creating a standards book for our district, for our PTA groups, as well as our own maintenance group around, standards around plant material and evergreens and low maintenance type impact, plant materials, trees and shrubs. And so I think that standards thing really kind of, you know, kind of helped me kind of really focus on this a little bit, because it's one of the things we need. We get, you go out and groups come in and do these great work, and then they cover up what we call our peepholes, Lauren and I were talking about today at the bottom, and then all of a sudden you're building floods, or something happens because everything gets covered up, or one gets 10,000 pine needles and another one gets five. Well, you know, so I think this will kind of level the playing field a little bit, and kind of excited about that work. And so Kristen's really excited about that, too. And it may be a way that we can work with her outside of this agreement to do some of that standards book for that. But Nicolette's right, one of the things they want to do outside is create some pilots as we move forward and come out of that July 14th meeting with some action points.
So questions, board, for this particular topic? No, Elizabeth's excited. We're all excited, but we know Elizabeth's excited. Thank you so much. So, board, that takes us through our, our discussion items, and we hit that, just kind of highlights, and now we asked a few questions. And so, you know, with Darryl here, I really just open it up to everyone for specific questions that you have on any of these. Ms. Kaplan?
Well, I think that the standards, when we're speaking of standards, that they need, you know, all high schools should include, I think, a stadium, an auditorium, and a gym, if there's space. Reynolds has a space. It's already been designated. The same standard would apply to Parkland and Prep if they had a space. The stadium, speaking of standards, speaking of the stadium, it creates an entire experience for band, assembly, special events, not just football. At the end of the day, it's going to allow the whole student body to participate. And I think it's important to focus on, on this, on the complete student experience. And I want to ask Superintendent McManus, do you agree that setting a standard for all high schools is a good idea? And if so, what would you expect to see for standards?
So yes, so I'm, I'm used to 30 high schools with all having those facilities. So the fact that some of ours don't, they weren't built, I guess, with that in mind, surprised me. So yeah, absolutely, if there's space on a campus, I think we should have certain things, the things that you just mentioned. An auditorium, every school has that, I believe. A gym, every school has that, and maybe some have multiple. No, Darryl? Yes? Two. And so then a stadium. And so most of our schools have that if they have room, except for Reynolds, the ones you mentioned, Reynolds Prep and Parkland. Parkland, you know, having Deaton Thomas being extra close to it helps if that is their stadium, that they can use whenever they need to. But anyway, yes. So to answer your question, do I think there should be a standard, especially if we ever have to build a new school, that, yeah, we should have all the facilities available for students to participate? Absolutely. Thank you.
So, Board Member Bramer?
Can I bounce off of Deanna Kaplan's question? Can the student body currently fit in the stadium as proposed?
Yes.
All the members and their families and the opponents?
The student body can, but it'll seat, it's going to be somewhere between 2,300 and 2,600.
What's the current population?
At Reynolds, probably 16, 1700.
So it can't fit, it can't fit the parent, one parent and every student, and have the experience of being in a stadium. It's based around the parking. Have we done a traffic study to see how it's going to affect the neighborhood going in and out, and how it's going to affect EMS?
We did that back when the original, when we originally had the conversation, when the policy change at the city level was taken. We did a study of all the parking places around the campus, what was continued, continuous to the campus. And so that was one of the things that hurt them, was that Brunson was not allowed to be continuous to Haynes Park, because it's separated by the street there. And so that hurt them a little bit on the parking count. So our parking count allows us to have, it's like 1 to 4, I believe, is the code. Is that right? Colon, looking at colon. So I think that's what allows us, the count to have about 2,500, 2,600.
Okay. And so I'm concerned about EMS getting in and out of West End and First Street, and as well as property values from Haynes Park all the way towards Peters Creek Parkway.
I mean, I, you know, I will tell you, typically when we've had some bigger events in the past, there, we had, there, may remember a couple of years ago, their baseball team went pretty far. We actually had Northwest Boulevard blocked off for the game so that we, kind of from a safety perspective, for people to be able to park and walk and get to the campus where they park across campus, so we wouldn't have traffic going up through Northwest Boulevard. City's been really good in working with us on that in the past. I would anticipate that maybe even be in the case as we move forward, that we'll have to have that ask in order to be safe.
Darryl, what, the parking was a part of that original plan that was taken and approved, is that, if my old memory serves me right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that correct? Okay, that's what I thought.
Darryl, a question based on the presentation that I assume comes from, I don't know what year, but on- 2012?
2012.
Yes, so it's common facts, all RJR site stadium options. So one of the common facts is that large varsity football games and football playoffs would have to be scheduled at a larger stadium, assuming if we go with the proposal, because I'm afraid to do higher level math, but I do have enough sense to know that if it's 17, if it's 1,700 students there, at least, and they have at least one parent, you had 3,400 of a facility that fits 2,600. So if you want two parents, if you want a brother, a cousin, if the other, how do we, as a district, accommodate that? You said that it can grow over time. How can it grow over time to meet the immediate need right now? Every child assumingly may have two parents.
Well, there's flexibility into the, into the design to expand the seating in the future, should the parking code change. So that flexibility is kind of built in, but that can't happen again until the code changes, or there's-
So the code changes, what?
From parking, for the parking. So the parking is driving the size of the stadium, because the number of parking spaces and the 1 to 4 that we have to kind of live by. So that's, that's driving the number. We have events all the time where we have to really manage crowd flow. Unfortunately, we had one this weekend, right? So we had to deal with, sometimes it just, you know, if you know you only got so many seats, you can only sell so many tickets. And that's just kind of the way schools manage that. They do that now, even in your larger stadiums. When there's playoff games, you could have seven or eight, 10,000 people show up. But if you only got 6,000 seats, I mean, you can only sell 6,000 tickets. So you kind of have to manage that at school level.
Okay. Have we had any conversations with, I guess, the municipality that has to adjust for the parking? And if we have, what, I guess, is, you know, their commentary around this, or advice?
Not really. I mean, we, I mean, I know of some school districts whose teams play off campus similar to what's, what's going on here now. But I have not had conversation with any other school districts about-
Oh, no, I didn't, not school districts. I mean, so-
The city of Winston.
Yes, so if we need to change the parking code-
No, I have not, because that's going to cause, that's going to force a code change, and you have to go through city county planning and some of that to make that happen, but we have not had that conversation.
What do you think the timeframe would be around trying to work through the adjustment to parking? Because I, I think my concern as a board member is that if there are 1,700 students at Parkland High School, and that's roughly around how many students they have every year, give or take, then saying that we're going to have something bigger later on doesn't meet the needs right now of the students and their parents.
But not every child attends a football games as much as we'd like them to. That doesn't happen.
I agree, but as a public school educator, we always have to prepare for what's in the building. Otherwise, we're not, we're not doing what we need to do for all children. So I do get that not all children come, but what if they do, and that's just a possibility.
Well, and there's room for all children. They're just, I mean, and most high school kids aren't going anywhere with their parent on a Friday night, so I don't think we have to worry about that either. But it would fit, the capacity does exceed what the capacity of the school is.
Do you think the student population is going to increase once you build a new stadium?
My guess is that more, part of, part of the study, and I'm not sure if it's in that 2012 study or not, was a study done on the number of kids that are attending, or number of people that are attending games. And so my guess is that the number of people attending games would go up on the Reynolds side because of the location in which it's currently at, would be my guess, because it's on campus.
But what about attending the school and therefore attending the game? So I'm saying the entire population of the school goes up when you build a brand new stadium, and now you have to add that into as well.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really know, yeah. Our part, our own parking is going to control some of that, because we really can't take on many more than 1,700 kids there now. We know with parking we have on Northwest Boulevard, I will tell you, a part of our long range plan is to build a parking lot down below the auditorium, try to clean up Northwest a little bit and make it safer for kids. But we're still never probably going to get above that 1,700 mark. It'd be really challenging.
Because we, we can't put mobile units there, correct?
There's two there now, but we can't put anything else, right? And when we do the, probably the next bond, that, you know, we'll probably renovate or tear down the building there, and one of the older buildings, and yeah, redo that, and we'll probably do away, hopefully do away with those at that point in time.
Because I was, I was, that's what I was, I was going to ask that question prompted, is the future? Because I know that at one point, someone had mentioned to me that there was a plan to demolish one of those buildings, the older building. I think the Social Services Department is in there now to rebuild a new one. And would, then that would, would the modules go away?
There's our hope, yeah, to kind of get rid of those mobile units, but that, that will, that was in the last bond, and when we made some cuts, that was one of the projects, but it'll definitely need to be in the next working overtime.
Ms. Mott singer?
I have a couple of questions. Could you review again, how much money was in the last bond to do this gym? The gym that we've replaced?
The Wiley Gym?
Yes, please.
3 million dollars.
3 million dollars?
Yes, ma'am.
No, I thought it was like nine.
No, it's not 3-
Oh, yeah, it wasn't. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was thinking, I was thinking of the gym, I mean, the stadium renovations.
Right, no, so it was about 9 million dollars to build that building that was in the last bond.
Yes, ma'am.
Right. So, and I do think that's important, because initially the agreement was not that the district would pay for that, but then indeed, it did go on the bond, and the district went above and beyond what they had committed to do. And so I think that's important to note, that that indeed happened. I'm concerned about projects and requests for funds outside of the usual bond process, because there are so many needs in the district, and that we have had a process that's been rigorous and painful and tedious. Anybody who's been through it understands it is tedious and painstaking. But that that has been the way that any kind of huge, other than maintenance projects or emergencies, that's pretty well how we have funded. Are you aware of any other project that we began apart outside of the bond process?
With partnerships, or that we've used money for?
Yeah.
Let me think for a second here.
Yeah, didn't-
Yeah, probably-
Didn't we get some grants for some land in the past? And then also, I know that, when, in the past, we have had some savings, like in the fat years, when we had lots of money coming out of bond.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've gone back after we've had savings on projects that were bid and completed, and reallocated some of those funds to other projects, or purchased land with those, those funds in the past.
Right, so we've had, well, at the end of a whole bond process-
Yes, ma'am.
We've had some money and we've used it for some forward thinking-
Yes, ma'am.
Or to finish up things. And I believe we did do that with some windows at Reynolds, didn't we recently?
That was capital.
Yeah, we moved some money around in order to do that. Yes, we did. We had some savings in that, moved the project up.
Was that capital, though?
It was capital dollars. That was our 10-year, two-thirds money.
Right, so it wasn't bond money, it was capital.
It was not bond money, no, ma'am. We have not used any bond savings to this point at all. I mean, we've had very little, but we have not used any of that at all. It's all, any savings that we've used so far has been out of our capital plan.
Did we have, used some grant money for, for a land that we got, maybe from the, for some land for?
We-
How do we get the, wasn't that a part of, part of the money that we used, maybe for Ashley or?
We did, we did with Ashley, you're correct.
I think, I think in the, I think that initially the board had voted to take 3 million dollars out of fund balance to- to pay for, secure the land for Ashley. And then, if I'm not mistaken, but on the back end, the grant came through. And so, really the grant money was there, but, but the board that was in place at the time had actually voted to use fund balance.
We, we did use some district money in that as well.
I think.
Some savings.
One thing that I'm, that I see as well, you know, when we, when we kind of talk about projects and, and, and you're right, Ms. Mott singer, the bond is, is tough because the needs are so, so large that you would like to fund it all and you know that you can't. And, and that was the largest bond asked that we had asked for our commissioners to put on was the, the, the last one we had. So, you know, I, I think one of the things that's a little different too is, you know, our projects, but, but I think, you know, what, what this one is with, with, you know, public, public, private partnerships. And so, that's a, to me, that's, that's, that's a little different because we are not coming up with the dollars. We are, we're being asked to, I, I, I believe to make some type of commitment. And then there is still, even though some of those things we've taken off the, the table. And I would say, you know, I think it was the right thing to do. The gym for Wiley was for a completely different school. And Wiley at that time had had a waiting list and needed more space. And so, it also fixed that gym. And if anybody's ever played Wiley basketball and you were in that gym, you knew why it needed to be fixed. But also added classrooms above. So, I think, you know, I think about things and, and though it's a little different, this was, this is with the, you know, a, a private group. But I, I like that concept, I like that idea. I think we can, we can gain much more as a district if we can have partnerships. I know it's great when we have, we have some partnerships with the town of Kernersville over Bagley, off Bagley Drive that's used for lacrosse. I think it started with the, with the, the school district, a grant, and then a, a, a lacrosse team, a, a, a private club. You know, East Forsyth High School benefits greatly from that as well as other clubs in the area. So, those types of things, I, I, you know, I, I want us to not, to just kind of shut that down. And maybe sometimes those types of things look different than things that we're just funding ourselves as, as we think about that. I think Ms. Kaplan wanted to say something, she had her hand up.
Oh, yes, well, I just wanted to talk about the savings issue. And if you could speak to the timing of why it would be critical to go ahead with this project with the Wiley Gym being constructed right now, the, the potential savings?
Well, there's, there's, with, with, with both, with the project going on, construction project going on, you know, there are some opportunities to leverage some resources while they're there. Though we've had some conversation, it really, we, we need to kind of really understand what that, the bid process is going to look like as we go through this and whether we can jump right in and do something or whether we have to go through the, through, through the process. So, right now, currently, the kind of area where the field is, is kind of the lay down area for the construction. And so, kind of once that's up and out of the way, obviously that opens that up to be able to move forward. But, but there might be some opportunities to capture some shared resources. I don't have those, to be honest, we detailed out tonight, but there's been a lot of discussion around that.
And when will that Wiley Gym be completed? What, what is the estimated date?
It's December.
December.
December, okay.
Great, okay, so, Mr. Bahana?
So, Darryl, a few questions, so get ready.
Remember, we got the ten o'clock rule now.
Well.
Well, that's the stopping time.
So, the first question I have is, so the original MOU, well, it's not, not the original one. The twenty eighteen MOU was originally based, that was sort of, the presumption was that it would be one hundred percent paid for with one hundred percent private dollars, right? At the, at the time.
The original MOU was that they would, the, the ask was that they would raise the funds for the stadium.
And they were given permission to do that.
And say it again?
They were given permission to do that with those, those stipulations that were in there.
Right, and so, the, so typically, because I think the general question that I have is just around kind of process and understanding that like, okay, if something is going to be funded with a hundred percent private dollars, us, the way I view it is that you can kind of do what you want. I mean, like if we are giving you, I know that within the MOU, we had, there were, there were, you know, parts where we would approve certain things, but I personally am, if someone is coming to you and saying, we're going to fund this thing, then there's a little bit more leeway because I'm like, okay, this is great, you're going to, you know, one hundred percent fund this. I think when there's a, there's sort of a switch and now there's a request for support there, I think I have some additional questions about, you know, sort of how we get from, okay, you, you want some assistance, you know, then we have to talk about kind of how, what that looks like, we're going to pull that assistance from, and then what the process is going to look like. Do we as the district have to bid that out or, you know, how, how is that going to happen?
Yeah, let me, let me back up because first of all, I'm going to go back to your, your original, beginning of your question. This board and this district has to approve the, the final plans. And you've, the board has actually seen those, it took, to current plans at one point in time. So, any, any approval process is still have to come through this board. The fact that they would be built on our property, we would still be involved in managing the project. More than likely, we would assign somebody to support that. Because there, we're, we're going to try to still keep it to the drawings and designs that's, that's, that's currently in place and has been approved. So, nothing else can be added or taken away. We're going to live by the document that you approved as a board. So, the process behind and actually done, Deion, this question the other day, was kind of once we, once we put public money and private money together, then does the bid process change, right? And so, I would assume at that point that we would have to bid the job and, and then we would own the project at that point from their own. I, I assume that, and I think Deion was, was going to maybe help me look into that or something. But I, I don't know that for sure, but I, but that would be my guess, that we would, we, we would then have to follow the bid laws and bid rules.
And so, because, and again, it's an additional concern. I understand the history, I understand what sort of previous boards have decided. But I also know that like even as I'm reviewing the PowerPoint, two thousand twelve was of course nine years ago. And there's a, there's a part in the PowerPoint that referred to a Chatham property which was purchased at the time. But it's now like, I mean, things kind of changed. So, when we talk about the sort of traffic studies or, or things like that, or estimates, or sort of anything that's sort of based, you know, previously, I have a question about kind of how all of that kind of is updated. Because I think that if we're sort of basing decisions solely on kind of what we've discussed in the past and not really updating some of that, it gives me some unease. So, specifically around the cost of the stadium, in, in the history, that, that history document, it said in twenty nineteen, it was around five million dollars. Well, construction costs have increased dramatically. So, I, I would need and want to understand where is it sitting right now in terms of cost? Because I, I think that that number probably has changed. And additionally, are we saying right now that there is, you know, having kind of, it being nine years later, that there are no other options in that area to put, to put it and be able to build it at full capacity? You know, is this the only op, the only viable option where it is right now? Because I, I, I guess, I don't know, I'd imagine, I, I don't know if we've explored that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we have not done an evaluation. Well, let me go back to your other question too. So, the number today is probably six and a half million. It's probably, I'm guessing about where it's at today in today's market, based upon, I think, maybe the last conversation Cole and I had. But, you know, we have not done a site evaluation since that, that period of time because we don't really have any guidance to that. And, and quite honestly, to be on campus, that was really the only location. It's the only location to be on the campus around.
Right, so, that sort of is to my point. Because for me personally, I understand the desire to have it be on campus. But I also know that right now we have three schools, Reynolds, Parkland, Atkins, who don't have facilities on their campus.
Or Prep.
And, and Prep?
Not Atkins, Prep.
It's.
The old Atkins.
Right, it's the old Atkins.
Yeah. You're, you're channeling my middle school days.
Right.
Prep, Prep plays at Atkins today.
Right, that, and that's why I kind of confused you. But I think, when I think about it, I, I would prefer, and I think sort of longer term thinking, not just like five years down the road, but like ten or twenty, if there is a possible way that we can provide Reynolds with a full state, a full sized stadium, even if we take the seven mile trip down to like less than one or like maybe one mile away, like I still think that that would be better than to build a stadium at the, at a fraction of where, what we build other high school stadiums at, if we can do that, if we can, if.
Keep in mind, it's still, the UDO would still apply, so if you're still going to be limited by parking. So, that's going to be an increase, you know, you'd have to purchase land, you'd have to also build parking lots. Whereas the location it is now is the most accessible location to students. And that's, I, for me, that's the most important factor, is that all students can access it.
Yeah, I, I get it. I just know that for me, I would like to see additional options.
So, so, so I, I think if I'm, if I'm understanding, because I, I, we want to have discussion, but then we want to kind of frame that into, you know, what, what we're going to do with that discussion. And so, am, am I hearing if, if we are wanting to leave this? If, so if I'm understanding that, that board members, several are saying, if we're going to put public dollars into this, then you're looking at wanting to explore a different site.
And possibly.
Are you looking at, let, just clarifying question, does that mean that you're saying if you, so we have a group that has, you know, paid for practice fields, have done designs, have, have done quite a bit through the, through the years to put this there? Are, are we, are we trying to give, and, and, and literally, I think from what they have, have asked, which I think at the last time was kind of what we put in the bond for Glenn and Tabor. So, that would maybe be half, probably not half. Are, are we saying that if we, if you're wanting to, to commission and move or look at moving a site, that the, that you're proposing that, that we don't need public dollars and then, I mean, private dollars, and then the district would, would pay for the whole thing?
No, so what I'm saying is that.
Because I think that, that changes the argument for me. If we're going to dictate all the things and then we're not even going to pay for it all, then I would not probably want to raise a dime for it.
Yeah, no, I, I think that though, when it switches, and again, I think we have to kind of understand the full picture. So, I do understand that there have been investments made and, you know, that was something that existed prior to me being on the board. But I would, because I was still in college. But I would say that for, for me to, to feel comfortable with it, I think that when you ask for, for us to make a contribution, you have to, it kind of pivots a little bit. Additionally, because previous boards have taken things out of the original MOU, which I think lessens the burden, right? So, when you originally agreed to a couple of things and then previous boards are like, hey, that's way too much to put on you, let's take some stuff out. And then the additional ask is like, we would like some, you know, funds on your part. I think that balance, balancing that out and also understanding that if we can build the stadium, this is just me personally, if we can build the stadium at full capacity or look at additional sites and that's a possibility, I personally would be a little bit more open to an investment like from, from us. Because then what you're looking at is we are doing what we would normally do in a, in a circumstance, like we would be building.
What we would normally do is fund it all.
Well, I mean.
But we haven't done it. I mean, and I put that on me too. I mean, I, I've, I've sat here and, you know, it didn't make the cut for them wanting three million like Glenn and Tabor. It just, it didn't make the cut. It was a need, but it, I mean, you know, and we weren't putting it all in. So, I, I fully understand and appreciate your view to this. I just wanted, I wanted myself to be clear too, is that, you know, putting, moving it and kind of doing those things, did it mean that we as a district were going to just pay for it? Okay.
Also, I mean, when, when we, they, they and we both explored options, the home field advantage and the school system both, we did look at, at like across the street from Crossnor, but that, of course, that land is no longer on the table or available. And we, we ran into a lot of issues, if I remember correctly, in getting children safely over there. We, it meant building some kind of tunnel or bridge. And we already know what the one, one Reynolds tunnel is kind of like. So, that was, that, that was, you know, I mean, that, that was another big, big cost to, to doing that at the time. And of course, that, as we, Darryl and his group have learned in, in just in the past couple of years, that, that would no longer be an option. And so, that was, we did also look at, there's an area where in, in Mrs. Reynolds' original plan for the whole land donation, right below where the, the, the parking lot next to the auditorium is, there was a site that she had mapped out for an elementary school there. We looked at that for Brunson, we looked at that for the stadium, we looked at that for lots of different things, trying to use that land. And it, after they did the topography on it, Darryl, you can correct me if I'm giving incorrect information, but it, it wasn't usable for any of those, those options for us to use that land, even though that's what Mrs. Reynolds' original idea for that land was whenever she donated it.
Yeah, development cost was extremely high, it was very large, it had tin and walls and things of that nature that had to be built there.
So, we did do a lot of, we did look at a lot of other, other options for the very reasons that you're saying, that we thought there might be an option for a bigger stadium or for, you know, other things. We, we, we really did explore a lot of different, different, the old Paisley, we looked at where the old Paisley football field was as well. But there again, you ran into the, the issue of having, you know, lots of travel. I mean, there wasn't a safe way to get students over there.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think Ms. Crowley made a good point, that we need to, I mean, as we move forward to full sized stadium, you know, we're probably going to have one to four, we're going to have to have somewhere about twelve, thirteen hundred parking spaces. And that will be challenging for us anywhere we go without having to buy or build a lot or an existing lot somewhere.
Wait, so, I'm sorry, you said in order to build the stadium at full capacity, which would be how many seats?
So, so if you go to, if you go to five thousand, fifty-two hundred like the other, just divide that by four. So, you're in a twelve, thirteen hundred range parking spaces you've got to create.
Is.
In order to meet, in order to meet their code requirement.
Okay, so is that, is that the amount of spaces that Deaton, like Deaton Thompson has right this second?
Yeah, Deaton Thompson meets the code.
They have thirteen hundred parking spaces?
They've got, between the school and what we use with the city with the Parks and Rec, they, they meet the code.
Okay.
Is their code different though, by Deaton Thompson? It's not one to four there?
I think at one time it was, and I can't remember what it was now.
Yeah, it's not one to four there.
It's kind of different around the city depending on what, the growth management plan they're in. It's kind of different, the ballpark downtown is different than Wake Forest is different, you know, some of those are different than. But for, for us, it's one to four for all of our high school stadiums.
So, I think Board Member Bramer has a question.
There just, I have two quick questions. One's for Darryl, do you, can you tell me what the approximate ask is going to be? I know this isn't set in stone, but approximate ask for a Reynolds Gym in the future, approximately with current data, eight dollars?
Uh, to renovate the, the existing gym? Wow, I don't really know, but I'm going to guess ten, fifteen million dollars.
I, I know you're just guessing, but I'm just trying to get myself.
We got some ADA issues and stuff to deal with there.
A mental image of what we have to spend at Reynolds already. And my second question is about the MOU, and I don't know whether you need to answer it or if Deion should answer it. Seven A says that confirmation HFA has secured adequate funding for the entire stadium facility, is that binding?
We can amend that, I think, can't we?
Seven A.
Yeah, I.
I mean, it's a part of the MOU which is, is, and it's still current right now, so, so yes, that's.
They have to provide the entire funding. So, if we're talking about a, a funding vote, they haven't met the contractual obligations. We have to amend the MOU anyway, so why aren't we amending the MOU to look at other approximate properties and other options? We can rule them out, but at least we look.
Okay, and I, I think, so I think we've had a lot of conversation, and I'm trying to, to move us on a little bit. So, we've had a lot of conversation around location, hearing from some board members that, you know, that, that want to look at it differently. So, taking that into account, I think, you know, at, at the end of the day, you know, really what, what we're, what we hear as board members is that, that, you know, home field advantage and Reynolds parents would appreciate some commitment from the board in, in funds, resources. And they feel like, and I'm, I'm kind of paraphrasing, but they feel like that that would help them in the community finish raising the rest of the money to be able to, to build it. And I think that's. And I think that's their ask. So, you know, having the conversation of, of different locations, but at the same time, do we have, does anybody have comments around, or would you look at putting any dollars into it? Because that's, that's part of the overall conversation.
We don't know what they pay, what they have. We don't know what the dollar ask is. We don't know what they have. They're not sharing, I asked Daryl if they shared with us their statements and they have it.
Quick question.
Yes.
So, Daryl, so relative to how our capital projects work, so we budget a certain amount of money for our capital projects to go with the capital plan every year, right?
Yeah, we, we get money from the county every two years and then we get one set of funds every year. It's our mobile modular, so we budget off of that, those dollar amounts allocated over a two-year period.
And so like within the capital plan, when we get that money, so every two years we have like a budgeted, we have projects that we want to tackle and then our, our capital savings are the savings that we get from, from those projects.
Right, if we bid them and they come in with it, savings to us.
And so do we get to decide what to do with those savings?
We, we do. We can, we can allocate them ever how we want to. I would still like to go and brief that to the commissioners just as, as, um, as a, as a friend of them. And, and, but, but I think that we have, we have the ability to ask to use it any way we want to.
Well, that was sort of to my point, so in your opinion, because I know that, the, having attended along with four of my other board members, four of my other colleagues having attended our, our session a couple of weeks ago with the commissioners, they were zealous in their questioning, their line of questioning around our budget. And so, you know, I think that as I'm thinking about potential options, do you, do you feel, and, and, you know, Ms. Gillis can chime in, do you feel like an, a request to utilize capital savings for, you know, to assist with Reynolds and Parkland would be something that commissioners would approve or support?
I, I mean, they've been very loyal to us and allowing us to use savings as we've requested in the past. So I, I don't anticipate any issues of that. I think the key there is both schools get something out of it. I think that's the important piece.
Um, what do we have right now in the savings?
So unallocated, we've got about, about a half a million in, in the two-thirds bond. We actually have, to be honest with you, actually at one point five, we've re- reallocated some of that money for some roof work that we need to get done, uh, at North Forsyth and a couple of other places that were, we, uh, had, had some real dire needs that we need to go ahead and repair. Uh, so right now I would say probably somewhere in the half a million range. I would also say I think the S R funds are going to help us a little bit on the funding piece because some of the large H V C projects are going to get paid for with H V A C funds that at some point will free up some dollars.
How much do you anticipate?
Twenty-six million.
Twenty-six million?
So was that coming out of?
I don't think he heard that. Twenty-six million is the funds, but I think.
That, that's the S R funds that we're budgeting for H V A C projects that we may move projects around and move up.
But we didn't have.
Do you have twenty-six million dollars aside for those projects?
Right now, we, not, not all of them are funded. Some of them are, some of them aren't.
Being twenty-six million dollars.
No, we may move some projects up, some that, that there may be five years from now that we can afford to move up.
Right, right, right.
And some will flip back.
But the twenty-six million dollars is not money we had put aside.
But it'll free up some funds. I don't know what that will be.
But not twenty-six million dollars, is that correct?
Like we will be, in other words, we are replacing more H V A Cs than we have already on the plan to, to replace.
That's correct.
Correct, and so whatever amount, that amount is.
Whatever savings that brings.
That would be our savings, okay.
But that's money we don't have. So we're, we're talking about saving money that we don't yet have. Is that correct?
Correct, someday when that, when we.
Someday, we hoped, we hoped at some point that we would get that money.
That's correct. It's in that, it's in that round that you discussed tonight.
Right, I understand, but I'm just trying to think about that ultimately the work we get to do will cost twenty-six million dollars. It's funded through S R dollars. But we don't have twenty-six million dollars either in the bank or as a guarantee from any source that we would indeed receive that. My understanding is that we're actually hoping to have a higher quality of H V A C than we had prior to these dollars. Is that correct?
Still twenty-six million.
I understand. I under, I, I'm trying, I'm really trying to, twenty-six million dollars is a big sum. And so I'm trying to understand, do we have twenty-six million dollars? Or is it we will be spending twenty-six million dollars and our great hope would be ultimately in the future, we would get funded that money, but that it's not?
Andrea said we had all the money, so we must have the twenty-six million.
So guys, I think at the end of the day, it's just like the savings up that we have now. You know, you bid a project and sometimes it works out good and you have some savings and so, yeah.
We don't have twenty-six million dollars in capital money.
Right.
That we're going to save. This is, he gets, we. No, but I'm saying the S R funds only can be used for this H V A C work. He's moving up these projects that were years down the road with the two-thirds bond money that we get every two years, moving it up now. So we, the two-thirds bond money will have savings in it, but we only get eight and a half million every two years.
Right, but to, but to Elizabeth's point, we have or we will receive the twenty-six million, correct?
Yes, we already, the twenty-six million is the, is the S R funds.
That's right.
That's one of the two fifteen we have.
The, at eight and a half million dollars as all of our capital money that we get every two years from the county commissioners, that is not all designated H V A C money. So by the time we receive twenty-six million dollars to go into H V A C, we may be looking decades down the road. We're not looking at projects that are about to get funded in the next two or three years. We're talking about things, moving up projects that might be sixteen years, twenty years down the track. So we're really talking about very long term. We're not talking about twenty-six million dollars that's about to be available. And I think that's, thank you for clarifying that because I think it was a little confusing.
Andrea, Andrea, if you'll stay there for just, just a moment, I, I think this is, you know, it's, it's good conversation and, and I think the other piece to that is we say savings, but we also know that our maintenance plan is, you know, that list is so long, um, which we're, we're kind of talking about trying to fix those, those things. So, um, you know, though we talked tonight that we have a lot of money coming into the district, it's really restricted as to how we use it. And so when you really look at things that we have some flexibility around, we have some flexibility there and we've talked about five hundred thousand dollars that, that Daryl could commit that way, but we also have a fund balance. And so Andrea is, you know, as our CFO, um, you know, just my time on the board, we have at times when we had some, some growth in our fund balance, we have purchased activity buses. We've, when I first came on the board, they were using about a million or two to, in the first year I was there, came in in December, they had used, uh, fund balance to budget, balance the budget. We didn't do that anymore, but I, I know that they've had, they had some lean years and, and I'm sure Board Member Mott Singer and, and Parker can say that that's what they had to do to keep people. We've, we've done a phone system, um, we've ta, paid one-time bonuses to staff. This, this board has voted, um, to use fund balance for Ashley. We didn't actually have to take it out of there because a grant came through. Um, and I'm not sure, but I, I think we might've had to touch some fuzz, but fund balance when we moved Haynes from Indiana Avenue to, um, Haynes on the Hill.
I think, I think we really, a budget of that, but we ended up taking some of that out of mobile modular.
So I, I think we've used, um, we, we've had the discretion to use that fund balance in different ways. And so, um, right now it looks like it sits at about six point nine million. I know one thing that we had talked about, um, is software for the district.
Yeah, the new E R P system for, for financing H R.
And so I know that there's like maybe some funding that could come from the state.
Yes, um, right now there's a, a senate bill for the budgets, is, is it included in there? I think our, our portion would be about two million, two and a half million is what we were promised early on before the funding froze, was frozen. Um, we're probably going to need another couple of million to, to implement our system. So we, we had talked about trying to use fund balance for that to get that rolling.
Right, and, and would you, would, would all of those funds need to come at, at one time?
Um, not at one time, but probably over a period of two years, twenty-four months.
About twenty-four months.
It takes about two, it takes about two years to implement the system.
Okay, all right, and, and go ahead.
I was going to say, and some skills, if, if, if the legislature doesn't pass a budget again, what, what would be the ramifications of that that we'd, that we would have to make up for?
The two and a half million that we were promised.
Okay, and that's it? There's nothing else like with insurance or any of that kind of good stuff that we?
Right now, we don't know, you know, what's going to happen with the state budget, but typically we, you know, we would use our fund balance to offset, to balance our budget like, like, um, Chair, um, I mean, like, um, Board Member Caldwell Jones said. Because we don't, you know, we have things that we plan to do in our budget and we have things like, like the state is going to say, this is how much salary increases is going to be, this is how much help is going to be. And we have to do that same increases for our locally funded staff.
Right, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
The county did not fund our total request, even though we, we have been told that we may get that money in the fall. But, you know, typically fund balance is used for savings for operational emergencies, like such things as the moving of a school or if there's a hurricane that hits and, you know, we need to, you know, we need to get somebody's, uh, boiler or chiller breaks down, you know, and if we don't have the capital funds to do it, fund balance can be used for stuff like that.
So, so Max, if we were to have to, if they didn't pass a budget or any of that stuff, was, is there any amount of that fund balance that, that? And, and the reason I ask that question is because, because apparently as a lifetime board member, a long time ago you had, we, we weren't allowed to keep a fund balance. You had to spin down. And so we, we didn't have it. And so then whenever we finally got a fund balance, we thought we'd died and gone to heaven and we had this big savings account and we saved and we saved and we saved. And then we realized that, you know, that it is a good thing to, to use that money, some of that money to keep your, you know, to keep a surplus enough that you know you have enough for anything that you might come. But at the same time, if there are needs that you, that, that it's there to be, um, to be used or, or whatever. So, I mean, I, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but, um, ballpark, would, would we have any amount in the fund balance this year? Let's say all worst case scenarios, no budgets passed, you know, none of the state money comes through for any of that other stuff that we're talking about. Do we, do we have any amount of fund balance that we could safely use?
Well, I mean, right now we're sitting at six point nine. When I close the books tomorrow and, and once the audit is done, we'll see if we, if we have any this year. I just pay maybe a couple more million this year, so we may be at, you know, nine million after the end of this year. If I had to spend four and a half on the system, that means there's another four and a half. I, I mean, I would like to build our fund balance back up before we spend it again because as you know, it was a little bit higher prior to, to, prior to me coming here and then, um, it was kind of depleted. So I don't like not having, you know, two million dollars of fund balance is not sufficient for, in, in, in my opinion, for us to have just in case there are things that do come up, so.
So that's my question, how, is there any amount from, that we have now that you would feel comfortable with us as a board deciding something to do with?
Without knowing what's going to happen with the state budget, I, I, I wouldn't want to say right now because it, it all depends on what happens with the state budget. Like if we get the two and a half million for the, for the E R P system and if, you know, they come through with, you know, the money that they promised us, you know, for certain things that we need to do, then I, I don't have a problem. I mean, I wouldn't have a problem talking about how much we could allocate, but right now I can't say because we don't have a budget. And without, without us having that, I, I wouldn't want to commit to anything right this second, just because of the unknown.
So Ms. Gillis, what, in, in your professional opinion, what is a safe amount to have? What is an ideal amount to have and to keep in a fund balance?
Well, there's not really, I mean, I asked the auditors that today because I was just trying to get his, his feedback. Cause you know, they, they, I mean, obviously cities and counties have, have minimum requirement fund balances. We don't have that at school districts, because some districts, like you said before, are not allowed to even have fund balance. Of the ones that I know what they do, they, you know, they, they try to keep a pretty decent fund balance in the larger districts because larger districts, districts have larger expenses. So, um, it's hard to say. I mean, obviously, you know, people always say one month's of expenses or a couple of months of expenses, but for us payroll is forty million dollars a month, so that's out of the question for us to have a high, a high of a fund balance. But I mean, I mean, I would ask the board, I mean, in the years that we've had fund balance, what, what was the good fund balance in your opinion? Because I mean, because it was, you know, when I got here, we really didn't have, we had a couple of million left. But I would, I would want to know what the board's ideal fund balance would be because, I mean, you guys have the history and it would be, you know, something that you guys might want to decide as a board, like how much fund balance you want to maintain for operational emergencies.
I think that's great.
I have a question about.
Yeah, Leah's had a question.
Yeah, the, the software system, um, I appreciate needing a new software system. How is that justified to come from fund balance and how is that justified to be prioritized over what students need?
Well, right now we're working on a nineteen eighty-five green screen. It's very inefficient, uh, D P I is migrating to a new system. They, um, want other districts to do so. They're not going to fully fund it. Obviously, if they give us a two point five, that'll be great. But, um, Kevin and I feel like right now, I mean, the, the one person that knew how to support that system retired. So right now we're like, I'm scrambling trying to get the books closed because we're trying to figure out how to do the stuff that normally was done by somebody else who knew this, who knew this thirty-year-old technology. So, um, I think it's imperative that we get a new system because, because we want something cloud-based and not, you know, DOS-based. And it's, it's going to make our, you know, our finances better, it's going to make, you know, payroll run better. We're going to be able to be more efficient, pay people quicker, because right now we're doing a lot, we do a lot of things paper. Everything's manual, so, I mean, I'm not trying to make it a priority, but I mean, it's, it's two thousand.
Well, it is a priority.
But it's a priority because D P I is also migrating, like, so we need to be able to speak to D P I with our systems and that's why they are funding this, but obviously, you know, they, they say they're going to do stuff and they want the districts to follow suit, but they have to, you know, provide the money for it. And I can tell you the money that they providing districts to do this is not sufficient to, alone. You know, there's not, the districts have to kick in some money.
That's an A S mainframe, right?
Yeah, it's a, A, A S four hundreds will be used.
And so basically it doesn't do much complicated math. You have to do the math outside of it in a spreadsheet and then type it in to make the report and have it shipped.
Yeah, and there's no, there's no mouse, I mean, you, you get the F keys and, you know.
And again, I understand how this impacts central office.
I mean, it impacts.
It impacts the whole district.
Absolutely, and I'm looking at what, what is it going to impact the student experience, you know, if we had to compare, you know?
Well, I mean.
I'm not saying it's not important, I'm just saying, we keep saying we're student-centered, we're student-focused and we're doing, and, and the fund balance, some have said for emergencies only. I'm just asking the question, what, what are we?
So, mm, okay, I, I, I want to say something and then I have a question for you. So I think that for me personally, in an ideal world, that's what you would use a fund balance for is savings, right? And then when you have emergencies, you have, it's savings and then when you have emergencies, like that's what it's utilized for. And for, I mean, I'm not going to say unfortunately, but I think because the district has sort of a history of not utilizing it that way, I personally don't know if like that, if, if that is how, you know, we should move, moving forward. I think that that's what I would rely on staff to tell me because I think we can decide whatever we want, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's in line with best practices or that ultimately longer term, we are, we are doing ourselves a disservice. Because when I think about the system, the system is one of those things where, yes, it functions in central office, it impacts directly, you know, practices in finances, in finance and in H R, but it ultimately filters throughout the district because it impacts every single employee, right? But I think that the, it sounds like to me, so to my question, you said possible two point five million from the state, but then a couple million from us, is that like a total of, you think around like four million, five million total?
Yeah.
So if we end up having to, like if the state, which is possible because it's happened before, if there's not a budget and we end up having to sort of eat that four million out of the six point nine we have now, that's, that's going to deplete the fund balance. I mean, to, to the, to, you know, it's going to be two points.
Well, it won't be four million, um, upfront, I mean, there'll be four million over the two-year period.
Right.
And you think you're going to have savings of two more million?
Yeah, it's potentially, yeah, this year probably will have at least two million in savings.
I, I would like to add on to Mr. Bahannon's comments because it seems to me, having first gotten on the board when we had no fund balance and where the county did not allow us to have a fund balance, to a shift to actually having a fund balance and having seen true catastrophes hit and we are living in a time where they are likely to hit again, that I don't think anybody's saying we're done. I don't think anybody's saying we're done with catastrophes, my own belief is that we have spent fund balance at times in ways that we really should not have, we spent fund balances on wants, and I think of a fund balance like the recommendation for you and your own family money to have enough of a buffer for an emergency, so that emergency might mean new tires, but it doesn't mean buy a car, and that my understanding of a fund balance is that it really is something, the situation with the software could not, it's urgent, because we're spending a lot of dollars on staff to do work that should be able to not have to be hand-done.
Why wouldn't that have been budgeted, the software, if we had a thirty-year-old system and?
That is a grand question for the General Assembly.
What the state, the state launched a business modernization program about three years ago, and they were going to fund all of, all of our, all of our districts, and we elected to be in the first wave of that, and we were pushed to wave two, so they started with eight school districts, came here from Chappell Hill, Charlotte, some of those others, and they were fully funded for their projects, and they, they launched those projects, well, for the amount that, that the state was able to give them, which is not the full hundred percent, we were on the cusp of going into that, that second wave, and then they froze the funding, and then the pandemic hit, and everything's been in that state, I will say this, I've been here fifteen years, if we don't upgrade our system, there are certain things, especially in HR, our HRMS system, how we onboard employees and things like that, they're going to cease to work, the things that Andrea deals with, the green screens, those functions, that, that's a solid system, it's just very antiquated and requires a ton of manual labor to process, those systems will, will continue to work, but they are not efficient at all, but our, our HR, our HR side that pushes into payroll and finance, there are no more patches for Lotus Domino and eighters four hundred, we are about six or seven revisions, versions back now, and holding it together every day, so we will cease to function in HR at some point with the software we have, is it two years from now, is it three years from now, I don't know, but I know it's coming, and we're trying to plan for that, so we were really hoping for the state funding to help us with this, and we're, we're hearing that the forty-eight point something million is in there for the wave two schools now, districts now, if it passes the thing that Andrea mentioned, which is the next step of funding, but, but it's not enough to get our project launched, but on a side note, we're also spending close to four hundred thousand a year to support our current systems with Serenix, and we're, so we're already paying, you know, four hundred grand a year to keep the old stuff going, so those costs would come off, so, yes, does it directly impact students, can you make that case, you know, it trickles down there somewhere, but is it directly impacting instruction right now, no, but if we're, if we can't onboard and hire teachers and pay them effectively, it's going to start to affect us, so we've got, we've got to move forward at some point.
Right.
And that, that's just my take on, and that, and those are, those, it's on my shoulders and Andrea's to make it happen.
We have tech support to support us right now, my payroll person was at, was trying to figure out how to do some stuff that our former tech person was doing, and she was there tonight, trying to figure it out, and, you know, we have one person to call that Serenix, and everybody in the state calls her, because everybody who's on Serenix calls her one person, and that's our tech support, because the technology is so old that we can't find anybody to replace the person who left.
It's, it's a lot like the phone system we funded about three years ago, the phones were going to stop ringing, have we not, and that's kind of where we are with some of the software we deal with now, that we're holding it together the best we can, we've got to move forward to be current, the district decides to not continue to operate the way we're operating.
And I feel that same way about our athletic facilities, we've been holding on for decades now, and we're not current, and we're putting our kids at risk, and how much risk are we willing to accept as a school district by exposing our children to more hours on the road behind the wheel, and are we willing to take responsibility for that, when something, when the emergency does happen, the catastrophe does happen?
And so not to kind of get, I, I don't want to get too, because I think that we all can sort of make, because, what I would say is that, I think that the, where this conversation sort of gets off the rails is where we kind of focus on sort of individual schools, and just to call a spade a spade, like, I, there is nobody, and I've said this at a, at a board meeting prior, there is no one on this board that I know of who does not think that Reynolds needs a stadium, that, that, that is not the point of contention, and I think that what personally, for me, is a little bit hard to kind of deal with, is any insinuation to the contrary, I think also, when we talk about students and what they're doing, no matter what changes we make, or what decision we make relative to a Reynolds stadium, Parkland students will still have to do every single thing that we have a lot of times talked about is not fair, is not, is, is dangerous, is, is, is not preferable, right, and, and the reality is that that's because their situation, where the school is located, does not allow right now for there to be a stadium placed on campus, they will remain at Deaton Thompson, that is sort of, there's not any conversation around how do we make that work, and I think that when you talk about, you know, and again, I'm not opposed to exploring additional options or to talk about how to, how to, you know, pay for it, or share, you know, share money between Parkland and Reynolds for these two projects, but I think that the issue is that we sort of talk about this in a silo as if, like, Parkland children are not, the children who attend Parkland, the children who participate in athletics at Parkland won't, after all of this, still have to commute, and it, it is not too far away, but it still is a, a little bit of a hop, a skip, and a jump, you can't walk to Deaton Thompson from Parkland, and I think that that's one of the reasons why I personally think if we explore additional options, and you, it's near Reynolds, but you still can't walk to it, I think that that is permissible, because we still are going to have that same expectation of kids at Parkland, and, and I'm sorry, Ms. Gillis, she's still sitting up there, I'm sorry about that.
I'm risk averse, so I, I'm obviously the person that's, that's been pounding this funding piece, because, I mean, yes, the AS system, you don't know it's a mainframe, and you can't even get parts easily for this system anymore, much less download, and the software is incredibly old, thirty years, I think about your, I mean, my laptop is bad in three, so I can't use a laptop in three, and I'm expected to use a thirty-year-old mainframe to do our entire payroll.
So, I, we, we've had a lot of conversation, we've, we've talked a lot about Reynolds, we, we're now talking about, you know, possible funding sources that we have control over, and thank you so much, Andrea, for, for, for what you do in the district, we appreciate you, and, and, you know, I, I agree to, to, there is, there is no state standard, I don't think there's anything, and I, and I don't feel even comfortable trying to, to put that on Andrea, when, when honestly, we, we need to kind of make those decisions as a board as to what we feel comfortable with, and I, and I appreciate your guidance that you have given us since you've been here, you have definitely helped this district for sure, so, I think if we transition just a little bit, you know, is, is there, you know, do we have, we had a, a presentation about Deaton Thompson and, and doing that, and I think that's pretty clear-cut, it's a lot of money, that's going to have to be a bond issue, and basically, it's a structural safety issue, just like we did with Mount Tabor and Glen, do we have any questions or follow-ups around the, the, the improvements at Parkland, the things that, because we really haven't, we, we got a brief, you know, we got a little bit of a briefing on that from, from Daryl, but we haven't had a lot of dive into that, so do we have something on that topic?
Well, Daryl, can you tell us just how much that would be for what you want to see with Parkland, how much money that would be?
Yeah, I'm kind of estimating.
The baseball field was a wish list, right?
Yeah, yeah, just the basic that I gave you, the top four or five items, I'm guessing are close to around a million dollars.
Okay.
And, and Daryl, excuse me, if you did all that, could they have, could they practice, could Parkland practice, have all practices onsite?
Yes, they do that now.
Okay, so they?
This would just allow them to probably play soccer and lacrosse on campus, where they're playing at Deaton Thompson now, and they were using Bolton as well.
Yeah, are they not using Bolton anymore?
They're just playing all at Deaton Thompson now.
They are?
Yes.
Okay, so, in the baseball field, would be a wish, and that's not in the five hundred?
No, that, that was, that was not in the original ask, I just jotted it down as we were looking at other options for them later on down the road.
Well, and a point of clarification, I think it's not five hundred thousand, it's a million, you're saying it would?
Oh, yeah, yeah, a million.
I think it'd be a million to do.
A million to do all that, sorry.
To do those things at Parkland without the baseball, is that right?
That's correct.
And their baseball field now is?
Yeah, they, yeah, they, they don't have restroom facilities at baseball, or a press box there, so typically.
So, just upgrades to what they have onsite already, okay, thank you.
They have that, they have those facilities at softball, but not at baseball.
What's the projection on the Deaton Thompson Stadium upgrade that's going to have to go in the next bond?
So, so it's going to be the similar, same, similar project that we did at Tabor and Glen, so, you know, we budgeted three million, and we went, probably, I think, it probably cost in this budget bond, probably around three point one or two, you're going to be somewhere in that neighborhood, depending on what inflation looks like in twenty-four.
Right, right, and how are, yeah, I'm a little concerned about costs, material costs seem to be going up quite a bit, is that, in labor?
It's really hard to get, get product right now.
Right, I mean, if you can, and which, so it's going to be three million, so, at least three, three million plus for the repairs that are?
In the two thousand sixteen bond, we actually budgeted for Deaton Thompson and North, you may recall, as well as the Reynolds Stadium, and so those got pulled out, but they were all at three million dollars.
Okay.
So, when you talk about Parkland's baseball, does Reynolds have concessions or bathrooms at their baseball?
No, they don't, they have a Port of John as well, just like Parkland has a.
How about their softball, do they have press box, scoreboard?
They do at Parkland, they do.
No, I mean, at Reynolds softball, you said, you said Parkland softball had everything?
Yeah, Reynolds does not, that's correct.
Okay, okay, so do we have additional follow-up or, or comments with, around the, the improvements that, that Daryl's kind of being specific about for, so what I, so what I, I've, I've
tried to recap maybe a little bit of where we are, and so jump in, but, you know, I, I think we, I think we've identified that we, we have five hundred thousand in savings from the, from the two-thirds capital dollars, and we, we call that savings, that's just savings from the current projects, that does not say we don't have other needs, right, it's just things that, that are there that we could repurpose for other things, Andrea has made it clear that we have six point nine million in our fund balance, and, and I know what a, a great CFO she is, so when she says we probably will pull in two more million, I'm, I think she's probably right, I don't think there's a, she's not waiting on the auditors to tell her that, so maybe you, you put that in there, I, I think we clearly heard the, the needs for the software, and, you know, fingers crossed that we get a budget passed, but, you know, I don't, I don't know that that'll happen or not, for Reynolds, you know, I, I think there, we, we kind of heard why now, so Wiley Jim is wrapping up, you know, would there, could there be some savings there, and then, of course, I think the big thing in, is that it, it's a public-private partnership, we're not putting all the money in, and those who are wanting to raise the additional money are saying it would really help if there was a commitment given from the board of some dollars to help them raise the rest, and just bear with me, then on the Parkland side, I think I'm, I'm hearing too, that, you know, there's, there's a, a new Deaton Thompson coming, and that would be in the next bond, but that there are some definite improvements around the million-dollar mark that could be made onsite for, for Parkland, so that's the site improvement to the field that's there, so that they can continue to play like soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, if they have that, the fencing and the netting that would, that would help in that, and then bleachers, restrooms, did we talk about lights for that field, or would lights be included or not?
No, they did not, that is correct, they would, they would prefer to have some lights on there for the spring, spring season.
Okay, so, so, you know, that's where, I think that kind of, that recaps, of course, out of that came, is that the right location for Reynolds, you know, a, a lot of those things, if we're giving, what I'm hearing is if we're going to give any public dollars, some board members would like to, to kind of revisit the, the location, so, I, I am, we've been, we've had a lot of conversation, and this is not new material, really, I mean, it's the first time, I think, this board has really gone through this process, and I really do appreciate everyone being very thoughtful, and, and really asking good questions, and, and that's how we get better, that when we collectively come together as a board, we, we make hopefully better decisions than, than we just do when we're individuals, and we think about all those different things, so with that being said, do we have some direction that this committee, so at this time, it goes back, because we are in a, we feel like we're in a board meeting, but we are in a committee meeting, and so at this time, those on the committee, myself, Ms. Kaplan, Ms. Parker, Mr. Bohannon, do we have committee members, any thoughts around, you know, we have two action items on the agenda for tonight, one's to, to consider full board approval of funding for Reynolds Stadium, it leaves it very open, so there's not, you know, a motion crafted, and then we have kind of the, the same thing for site improvements for Parkland, so do we have, I, I don't know if we're ready to go straight into motions, or do we have any more discussion about that before we kind of end the discussion period and go into action?
Well.
Or if we have action?
I'd like to make a motion.
I have a question before you go into the motions.
Okay.
That's great, thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Walker, I would be, I think, very relieved to hear from the city around helping us to understand better this parking relaxation, I think that's the, like, the issue, that if we could make the site appropriate for the students and families and community that's a part of Reynolds, I think that could alleviate a lot of, you know, technical stress around this issue with location, I think that when we talk about best practices around public school administration, you just can't say all kids may not come, and their parents, and I think that that then becomes, well, at Reynolds, the students feel like we can't bring our friends, family, and everybody else, like Mount Tabor and this and that, so then there, you're, out of trying to create something equal, you actually creating, again, an issue around what some kids can do and what some can't, and so I think we definitely should invest time in figuring out if, based on, you know, the, the, this is a recorded meeting, the city hearing, kind of where we are with trying to make sure that there is a space that is appropriate for Reynolds Stadium, for all the students to participate reasonably as a four A high school, what, what is the temperament to relax the parking, so that we can really anticipate building onsite as a four A school?
Yeah, I, I mean, that, that would require a code change and, and public hearings around that, and then go before the city council in order to, for that to happen, I think it will be, I think it'll be challenging, just quite honestly, and, and, you know, the intent in the current code is to make sure that we can park people in locations and not in neighborhoods, and that was some of the concern in the beginning, and to just be totally honest with you, the current code allows us to stay within our footprint, and I think that will be challenging as we go forward, if we try that.
The parking places down there, like, close to the tennis court area, were those, is, would those, if you use those, would they be accessible to the field at all, is there a bridge, I can't remember, it's been a while?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, were they, were they in the count?
They were in the count.
Okay.
No, no, the Haynes Park tennis court parking is not in the count.
Oh, on the other side of the park.
And neither is the parking along Northwest Boulevard, that's not counted either.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct.
So, does challenging mean that you can't try?
No, it doesn't mean we can't try.
Okay.
So, that, if you put those in, that would help some, those parking spaces?
Yeah, we, we've got to go from around seven fifty, eight hundred parking spaces up to close to around a thousand, we'd have to pick up a couple hundred spots.
So, I, I understand the process, the process to, to shift, the code change, you know, that's something that takes time and, you know, energy effort, but I also think that one of the factors that I think contributes to that potential, and I know that in, maybe having conversation with the city, you can see if there's a stomach to do that, or an appetite to do that at all, but I think that that's, to me, one of the reasons why we need to be sure about the location, and I say this meaning that like, we may have been sure previously. And I say this meaning that like, we may have been sure previously, but right now in 2021, I need to be sure that like, that is the, like, best location. Because I think that if there's a potential option elsewhere and we still would have to do the same thing that we need to do now to be able, for the stadium to be at full capacity, maybe there's more of a stomach to make a shift in a different location than where it currently is slated to be right now. Because I think that, I also remember there being a lot of pushback from the community around building the stadium in its current location. And I know that the timing of, I, I, I'll just speak for me. I think that the timing of this meeting, it being summertime, kids aren't in school, it being kind of on the tail end of when we start our break, I think that's one of the reasons why you're not seeing that now. But I think that we have, I have received sort of correspondence around that. And I think that what can help that is potentially looking at a different location than that area right there.
And just to echo that, Mr. Bohannon, I think that I'm very concerned as a board member, as I'm sure the entire community is around, the students at Reynolds have to travel by, across a highway to get to play sports. And then there is additional, to me, loss of learning behind because we are so far away from where we have to play on Friday night. We leave our classes 30 minutes, 45 minutes earlier. So it's hard to really explain maybe to someone who's not in education what those minutes account to at the end of the year. But I promise you, it is ill affecting those students who have to leave 30 minutes early to get across, you know, to get their, to get to a site 20, 30 minutes away, bus time or whatever vehicle they're using. And so I just wonder if there would be some consideration from the municipality and that community around if we found a location close to Reynolds, could then the parking code relaxation be, you know, a better consideration? Because we're talking about children's safety and their loss of learning. And I will say for myself, and I think I speak on behalf of the board, that is why we are here. Student academic achievement and definitely safety. So I appreciate, Daryl, if we could try to get that across to, as an option.
So I think having had three children go through Reynolds and another one entering this year, I can speak from a parent's standpoint of the importance of having this facility on campus, just like we do for every other high school other than Parkland and Prep. There's a reason we put these facilities on campus, it's so that they're accessible to everybody. Every student should be able to walk out of the school and walk down to practice. Not get a car, not have a mom come pick them up, not have to rely on a friend who has a car who will give them a ride. You know, when every game is an away game, to share Woodbury's point, that's more instruction time you're missing. That's missing fourth period every single game day. And actually, that doesn't affect football because of them playing on Friday nights, but it affects every other field sport. But the accessibility is absolutely an issue. I've lived it. I've watched it. I've been there with my kids through it. And Board Member Bohannon, while I appreciate you needing to be comfortable with something, I think 1,700 kids and their families, that's who we need to be making comfortable with this. And that's why it needs to be on campus.
Yeah, okay. So I, when I say what I, what my comfortability is, I want to just be clear. That's not, that's not a selfish, I need to be comfortable. That's me understanding as a board member and me having the same fiduciary responsibility that you do, that in order for me to support something, I have to feel comfortable about it. Because I also serve a constituency, just like you do, who have to have their needs met. And when I am balancing, trying to make a decision on how to allocate and where to allocate funds, I have to balance all of that. So when I make points about me and how I feel or whatever, it's not from a selfish place. It's from a place of me trying to do what's best for children. So the other piece, and sort of why, because we've talked about this a lot, Madam Superintendent, no matter what we do, whether it's allocate however much money or decide to build the stadium or not, I've heard multiple times that there's an issue with students being able to get to practices at Reynolds, right? So there are groups of students who may not be able to get to a practice or to try out because they don't have the rides. That, to me, is a, that is a relatively quick fix that I think something, I think that there was a solution to that prior to kind of building the stadium. We have activity buses for a reason. And I think that if, it's something, because Leah has said that that's been something that's been a problem for quite some time. It's the, it's the ability to get students to these, these tryouts or these practices and that it's a barrier for them to be able to participate in sports.
But even as a spectator, they can't, they can't go watch their friends play or anything because they can't get there, right?
So I would say that my concern, so I would say that specifically, I guess this question is aligned to, if a child, I think that children should have the ability, if they want to try out for a sport, they should be able to do that wherever. And then I know that there's not, we can't bus children to view a sport, but I'm saying that to participate in it. If that's a barrier, that, to me, is something that could be fixed. Because Reynolds, of course, has, just like a couple of our other schools, has unique challenges. I think that that would be something that could be fixed, right? Am I correct?
So, yeah, so basically, that is, that is our responsibility. If we have a facility that is not conducive to kids being right there to do extracurriculars, then I think we should be finding ways to make sure they're safe and getting places. I mean, that is our, that is our responsibility. Absolutely, it's our responsibility to just say, well, get to practice or get to, you know, I think, so if this, I will just say this, if this doesn't happen, we have to do something because it's not right to have kids trying to find their own rides.
So, and that has a price ticket as well, it would for us, correct?
Well, and also drivers, I know we do, I've never, this is all new with activity buses, finding our own people to drive buses. I've never seen this. This is my first district that I've seen this and I, it is common, I think, across the state. But what I'm, what I'm saying is for us to find drivers of staff who have their licenses to drive buses and all that, that's part of this. But can we absolutely do it to meet the needs of kids? You heard me earlier, say what I feel about all this. We do whatever it takes to meet the needs of our kids, a period. So, yeah, there, but is it a heavy lift to find all times of days? What about at the end of practice for parents?
Yes.
They've got to get back to school too. So, so again, there's layers, but can it be done? Anything can be done. It's just not, it's not having to be done everywhere. It's only having to be done in certain places, so.
At one point, at one point, we, at one point, the district paid for, I know at least one other bus and a driver. Do we still do that? Am I right that we did that as a district when that first came up?
We did that, that's correct.
And did, do we do that now?
We did not because of last spring, we didn't really have any, any things going on. But we've still offering the opportunity and service.
Okay. I was just thinking, when that was all going on. So again, board members, I think we've, I mean, we've had a lot of conversation. I hear loud and clear that, that some are just not, not feeling the location and have some concerns about that. I think, you know, myself, is if we were going to take on that whole project and we were going to fund that thing and we weren't really relying on the community to do it, I can, you know, I kind of get a sense of that. But it's just hard for me to, it's hard for me to feel that, to kind of back up that far. And that's just me personally. So again, we had some additional dialogue. Members of the committee, at this point, do we have, do we have a motion we want to put on the table? Of course, it would have a second. And then, of course, discussion, but that part of the discussion would be with just the committee members. So I don't want to stop any board members, you know, so that's why I'm kind of phasing into that. So if we start doing the motions, we're just talking board, I mean, committee members right now.
Well, I have a motion. Based on the fact that we have a site that has been agreed on. The Reynolds parents, the Reynolds community wants it there. We have the space for it and hopefully we can work with city council to increase the parking so we can increase the stadium. So I would like to make a motion that we provide RJ Reynolds Stadium with 2 million and Parkland with 500,000. And then the MOU to say that we can start construction as long as the initial public money is proposed and the project can be phased.
Unreadiness. Where is the 2 million coming from?
You just specify where you want the 2 million.
I would like to see it out of the fund balance.
Thank you. And the 500 from the?
Savings. Yes.
I'm sorry, Ms. Director Juma, would you repeat the part of the, sorry.
Well, you can probably word it a little bit better than me, but to really say that we can start the project, we can start the construction in phases as long as some initial public dollars have been voted on and agreed to. Because we're obviously going to have to raise some more money.
Did you, are you good with that, Dion? Do you capture? So basically, I would be home field, home field advantage or Reynolds parents would be able, we would, we would start to start construction. And you would like to take 2 million from the fund balance and use the 500,000 from the maintenance savings?
Yes.
Okay. So have a, have a motion from committee? Do I have a, do I have a, do I have a second?
I can't, I can't second the motion as, as it is. I guess I'm still a little uncomfortable with not knowing whether we would get an additional 2 million in fund balance or that amount.
Well, I, I think-
I could be, anyway, that's my concern.
Okay. Well, I mean, I-
At this point, in the fact that maybe Parkland needed the, the million is the other part of that, to do the upgrades there for them to have that. So I, I mean, that's just my concern about, about the motion.
Okay. So, so I have, I have some concern about not fully funding the, the piece at Parkland. So, so I think that, well, I think that, so I think we have a motion, but I, what I'm gathering is it's going to die for a lack of a second. So in my, I'll make a motion, it might die too. But so I believe, again, that the six-point, and I understand we need some software, I heard that, that some of that can be phased in, we're not having to pull all of that out at one time. And though this is not apples to oranges, but just trying to help you understand some of my rationale with this, is that the last stadium that the, that the district built was at Waukataun High School. And that's been years ago. And that was 2 million dollars. And you take that today, again, that wouldn't, that wouldn't build a high school and nor are we even offering to fully fund Reynolds. So, so I'm making a motion that we, we use fund balance to put 2 million dollars toward the Reynolds Stadium. And we use fund balance to put a million dollars toward the improvement to Parkland. And that we leave the 500,000 savings alone because it's really not savings. There's so many, there's so much, and I think the clear cut to me is using that fund balance has been for those one-time expenses, capital expenses, like activity buses and other things, phone systems and other things we've done. So my motion is 3 million out of the fund balance, two would go to support the stadium at Reynolds and one would go to help with the onsite campus improvements at Parkland.
And I'll second that.
All right. So we have, we have a motion and a second. And again, we have-
Can I clarify something with your motion?
Yes.
So that is with the current fund balance you would do that? Not if we get the 2 million that Ms. Gillis is hopeful that we do?
Right. I would, I would do it with the current fund balance that we have. But I feel like with, with June 30 knocking on the door and a very capable CFO thinking that she's going to get two more, that we're going to have 2 million, even if it was just one. But I, it's hard for me to, to think, I know you can't really say that until the audit comes back, but Ms. Gillis, at her time here, has been spot on with our finances. The first time we've had that in a CFO since I've been here. And so it's hard for me to think that that won't, that won't grow by 2 million. So we have a, we have a motion and we have a second. Again, those who will be voting, just because it's committee, will be myself, Ms. Kaplan, Mr. Bohannon and Ms. Parker. So all in favor of the motion on the table? All right. And any opposed? Okay. So the, the motion passes three to one. That means it will come out of committee and that will go to a full board vote this Thursday at 2 o'clock. Again, I appreciate those of you who are in the audience and you've been very patient. And board members, I appreciate your candid and honest and respectful conversations tonight. This committee meeting is adjourned. Thank you.